All right, it is Monday, February 6, 6:00 PM. And we do have a quorum. Welcome to the Lewisville City Council Workshop Session. We're gonna first go through a discussion of regular agenda items and consent agenda items. So council, if you go ahead and make sure you've got your packets open. And we will take a look at consent agenda. Item one.
So I'm sorry, is this, are we going to the consent agenda? I don't buy it.
Yeah, we just, yeah, prickly, see if there's anything that needs to be pulled or questions. Item one. Item two. James, this effectively, James Cooney?
Yes, sir.
This effectively repays itself in what, three years with the rental rates that we have?
Based on rates that we had last fall, yes. Based on rates we expect this year.
I did have a question, does it, does it also handle the vendors down the, you know, down the street or just the state?
On Church Street, it'll go at least to the five poles. And we think it'll go almost all the way to the west parking lot. So that covers most of our vendors for all except western.
Item three. Item four.
Mayor, I'm going to ask if you can move AC's presentation from C up to the eight, because we're voting on this in council today. I'd like to see, should we see that presentation?
Presentation from where?
This is around the mowing. So it's like C.
Yep, item C, so you'd like to move that to?
I just want to make sure we get to a workshop, so we don't have to vote on it and then come back and see the, and talk about that after, after we vote on it.
Oh, okay.
So you said you want to move it within the workshop session?
Yes.
Oh, like, like doing?
Yeah, so instead of doing, yeah, instead of doing health infrastructure first, we would rather flip that. And you want to do that because of item four?
That, that's right.
Okay, fair. Any questions on item four before we move to item five?
I have some questions, but we reserve to the presentation.
But that'll be part of the presentation, got it. Regular hearing, item five.
I really like Amber Forman.
I'm fine with Amber.
I have some concerns with, with Amber.
Concern about the track and release?
That's, that's, I don't think that's something that we need to be getting into as a city, but that's, so I'd rather not have somebody on the board that's bringing that conversation.
Okay, well then, we can go, James Cooney.
I like that one anyway.
Okay.
Fair enough.
See, I can compromise. A little reasonable. See chiefs, both of you, I can compromise.
Item six. Closed session, we do have? Oh, go ahead.
So if we take no action, what does that mean?
It means it stays exactly the way it is, and they're working toward, they're basically trying to get in concurrence with TechDOT. So they have, and correct me if I'm wrong, but you submitted your study, and so now they're gonna make a determination if they agree with their study or not?
The highest agency responsible for transportation regulation and rules is Texas Transportation Commission in Austin. So we sent our result, our results for information of everybody that did not know. Our result of this speed study came up about 62 miles per hour, 85 percentile to 68 miles per hour. And it's about 10 miles per hour more than what TechDOT concluded. So I sent it over to TechDOT in Mesquite, and there's two ways, either to compromise and come to a common ground, or they send it to TRF in Texas, in Austin, that's the headquarter traffic department, TechDOT headquarter department. Over there, they will prepare ordinance and material for the Transportation Council. And then Transportation Council will decide about if we are gonna go with 50 miles per hour, 60 miles per hour remains, or maybe some compromise common ground of 55 miles per hour. But whatever we get the Transportation Board, it's mandatory, and they have the final say in this discussion.
I have a question. I'm sorry, go ahead. No, no, go ahead.
I, I still have a question about our study, same question I had on the TechDOT study, and that is the number of cars reported. It sounds like a very, very low sample size.
Oh, that 125, that's from the manual, that the method, let me put it this way, that 125, it means, it does not mean that we measure 125 miles in a row. It means that we select those vehicles. Those vehicles should have some, they should not come to, they should not have stopped at a red light, or they should not come to the road from a driveway, so they're speeding up, or they are not planning to go to another driveway, so they're slowed down. They are not in what we call a platoon of cars, they should be in the front row of those cars. So taking that, what that 125 each takes about one hour to accomplish, and that's the way that TechDOT manual, and it has been a standard for Texas for a long time. But it's totally legit.
So the time, the time over which the study was done is how you like?
The time should be in a regular weekday with no occasions around, no football match, no whatever, school, graduation, whatever we may have, plus in a non-peak hour. So we did it from 9:30 to 11:30, from 2:30 to 4:30. That's the, basically the times that you can go and make this study. I cannot talk about TechDOT, their information does not include timing, but they have done it in a weekday as well.
Well, we talk about TechDOT all the time.
Well, it sounds like they're fine.
This is, this is cars not being, this is cars like, basically if I was going from the Colony to Lewisville, this is, they're counting the cars that are not stopped by that first red light or second red light, right? They're, they're, it's, they're counting cars that continually going.
They're going, they have to be driving at 40, well.
They had to be continuously going.
It was in four sections from the, um... So FM 544 to Fish Hatchery, Fish Hatchery to Half Inns, and we divided the, this segment that is a longer segment to, two segments that's almost in middle of the bridge that we have, and this is the same way that they have divided. We, we did not have any dispute after Valley Ridge. They had like 50 miles, they concluded 50 miles, and it's 50 miles, and we accepted. So this was the disputed area that the results are here, and we, we call this a strip map, and we sent the same thing to TechDOT, and they're gonna send it to Transportation Council.
The reason my question, the number of cars is?
The 125 cars is basically, I mean, we measured hundreds of cars, we only selected 125 because all those cars were going at a free-flowing condition.
How many hours of observation do you think we did? Maybe that's a better way to look at that.
In each location, I can tell 40 minutes to one hour.
Over the course of?
Yeah, so. For each location, so it was six hours.
There might have been 500 cars in that time, but we only selected 125 of them.
Okay.
The reason my question is, I drove, I drove from, from Valley Ridge to 544 at about 5 o'clock on a Saturday, Saturday evening, okay? And I, I drove, I made sure that I drove the speed limit, okay? Which is 60 right now. And I counted the number of cars that I met during the, you know, during the five or six minutes it took me to go through that stretch. And I counted 150 cars coming towards me during that, in just that five-minute timeframe. So that's why, you know, and then, and then also during that timeframe, I didn't pass a single car. I was driving 60. I did not pass a single vehicle, except for the ones that were stopped at the stoplights. And five cars passed me, so that's why I, that's why I raised the questions, right?
Well, and you'll notice our study, even though there were only 125 cars, the 85th percentile speed is actually above 60, which is what we've said about TechDOT.
Interesting point is, the maximum speed we had like 78, 75 miles per hour. So basically, some people are driving like Sam Raven. But it's a weekday, sometimes you have vehicles, trucks, you have heavy vehicles, more enduring the weekdays, we know that it's in the rural area, there are a lot of shops and dealers, there are dropping vehicles, loading vehicles, that affects the general speed. And to be honest, one of the criteria that is included in the speed limit determination is the condition of the traffic. If the traffic is really high, one of the parameters other than the road geometry, other than the access and different, one of those is the traffic's condition. And we really have the traffic, and we should really consider this. So we should be waiting for hearing back from TechDOT and for hearing back from state Transportation Council. I don't expect it to be this soon, we don't have a timeframe, we don't have a timeline, and, but I expect it will be more than a couple of months.
2027.
So, so wait, hold on.
So we're table on this?
We're just taking no action.
We'll bring it back.
So I actually think that the, what we found in your, in your study, I actually think that that's pretty accurate. That's what I see when I'm out there. And I'm not the one going 78.
And I'm not the one driving in town cars.
But however, I'm really curious.
So you weren't driving that day?
No, hold on, so I'm really curious, why, what triggered this? Why, I mean, we kind of said that TechDOT kind of, it was kind of like a rushed sort of deal, why, why aren't they trying to lower the speed limit?
Let me give you the history. Last spring, TechDOT sent us a speed study that said that the speed should be lowered to 50 miles an hour. And I actually questioned TechDOT at the time, because I drive that road every day to and from work. And I was very quickly shut down by the folks at TechDOT with regard to my questioning their study. So anyway, I, we got this on the agenda, because I, at that point, I didn't think TechDOT was gonna relax. And then, of course, it made it on the agenda, well then we started looking more closely at their study once Sirwan started, and we realized that, Sirwan also agreed there was something not quite right with that study. And then the only thing we could think of is that they must have taken their counts during peak times when it was heavy traffic and no, you know, people were driving 50.
But is there like a regularly, do they have to do a traffic count or study like every so many years? Like what triggered, I mean, is it because of the development on the road? Is it because there's, you know, a certain number of incidences on the road? What is triggering?
My understanding is about the safety concern and about the kind of accident ratio in this area that we have had, and it has triggered the Denton area. The whole request was made by Denton area office, TechDOT Denton area office.
Or this road specifically, or?
This road specifically. So they have requested from the district, which is Dallas district, and they have done the, but the trigger was, started with the Denton area TechDOT office. And it was based on the safety concerns, that's what they explained to us.
Yeah, that construction that's there.
During, during peak hours though, because my daughter lives in the Colony, if I'm coming back during peak hour, hours, you don't even get to the speed limit.
You can't.
Until after you pass Holford Prairie, and then that stretch you can get to the speed limit.
So you're the one?
Just continue. Oh, I wasn't doing 78.
I think, I think we're, I think we've beaten this one to death, and we're gonna go ahead and move on. We do have closed session tonight, so, all right. Let's, let's move on. We're going to go ahead and move to workshop, item C, discussion of proposed changes to Chapter 9 of Lewisville Code Ordnances related to property maintenance and preservation of mowing contract and administrative strategies. We have our Director of Neighborhood and Inspection Services, Mr. Chris McGinn, along with our Director of Parks and Recreation, Stacy Naya, to present the PowerPoint.
Mayor, City Council, just wanted to take a few minutes this evening to kind of go over some proposed changes coming to our Chapter 9 ordinance and related to property maintenance. And the reason that we're, we're looking at this, just that we're, that these proposed changes, want to get a little bit of feedback from y'all, and, you know, take this through legal review, and hopefully have this coming to council sometime, maybe in April. But, but we have a lot of things that are pointing us to the direction of, we need to make some changes to our ordinance to kind of reflect where some of our future long-range plans are taking us. So we have the Lewisville 2025 Plan, expanded green, we have our Sustainability Action Plan, talking about protecting some of our green spaces, some of our pollinators. We have the Parks Master Plan, and if I understand that correctly, that's gonna be housed in the Health and Infrastructure Plan now. And then we also have the Denton County Green Belt Plan, put together by the Upper Trinity Conservation Trust, which the city adopted in 2019 along with other area cities, that is geared to maintain some of our, our wetlands and some of those areas that feed our watershed, like Lewisville. Where this particular ordinance is located is in our Chapter 9, under 9-57, Vegetative Growth, and it basically lays out, you know, what that is. Part of that is weeds, brush, and grass. And then also the definition, definitions which are located in 9-1, talking about what weeds are. We, kind of a breakdown of what the current regulations are, in kind of an easy-to-read table. We have developed property, which are, developed property can be commercial or residential property, basically tracks of land with structures on them, that, that regulation, you know, any weeds higher than, than six inches would be considered a violation according to the current ordinance. And then we have two types of regulations over Type A undeveloped property and Type B, so anything less than acre, 12 inches, and then anything more than acre is the 12 inches and then 50 feet from any surface improvement. So basically, if you have a square parcel, they'd have to mow the perimeter 50 feet in. Looking at what are currently our cities, cities are doing, and keep in mind that this is just for developed tracks, for high grass and weeds for the, for our survey results. We're kind of here with Addison and Grapevine with the six inches, and then we have a couple of cities that are, that are right at eight, and then we have a list of cities here that are 12 inches, and just keep in mind that this is when, you know, high grass and weeds actually become violation where it can be addressed. And so just wanted to see if particularly on this, this slide here, if there's any council input on kind of where we're at right now with the, with the six inches.
So also on, on that item, just to let you know, so we are the most restrictive of our survey cities, are one of the most restrictive. Staff is not necessarily saying we need to go to higher, eight inches or 12 inches. I will say that if you got to 12 inches, there, I think you might have some outcry from the community. But the more you allow grass to grow, the less people have to run lawn mowers, and so there is a sustainability benefit to going higher than just six inches. So we just wanted to see kind of what the temperature of council was, if that's something of interest to you to move off the six inches, or do you want to just keep on the six inches?
I wouldn't want to go to 12.
So talk to me about the enforcement direction, and, and I don't know if you've talked with some of these other cities. Is it, I mean, because when we get to seven inches, we've still got, hey, we'll give you a couple of weeks, we'll do, I mean?
Like, like before we could even talk to resident about it would have to be a violation.
Yeah, you already have to be in, it's, so do the other cities like start saying, hey, at eight inches, start going, hey, you might want to consider getting a lawn mode before you hit 12 inches, because that's gonna be a problem?
Well, that's hard to say what they're actually doing, but like I know on our end, you know, as soon as the grass becomes beyond that six inches, we're, we're getting.
Oh, I know.
Concern, so.
We get the calls.
So it's, it's hard to say how they're actually operating, but technically, they wouldn't really be able to send out a violation notice until it's every bit of 12 inches.
So I don't have a problem, I guess personally, with going with some of the higher, some of, some of the native prairie grasses and some of the sages and, or sedges and some of the other plants that are being recommended for native cover, actually thrive at that six inch and a bit higher, and it'll look really good. But what I, what I'd hate to see is, what I, what I'd rather see is like a courtesy notice, hey, you're getting close. And, and so that it's not, I mean, we're always talking about code enforcement is always, is perceived as always having the stick, right? And, and maybe, maybe part of the carrot is, here's a nice gram saying, hey, you're getting close. I know they're gonna yell regardless, I got, I got, I got something on my door. But I would, I would think that maybe if we went to a higher, that might give you a little more of a window to say, hey, you're getting close. Six inches, you don't have a window, it's, I mean, that's a week.
I think the other thing you'll see, Mayor, is that if we went to higher, you're going, code enforcement's goal obviously is to get compliance, right? So there's a lot of, we're gonna send you a notice of violation, if you have a problem with that, give us a call, we're gonna work with you as long as you're making efforts towards this. I think if you got to a higher level, we're gonna have to be a little bit more rigid because you don't want to get, you know, lost in all of that.
Okay, that's fair.
I, I like six inches, I, I think, I mean, is it really a week for six inches? My grass, I got Georgia, it doesn't grow fast at all, and it doesn't grow fast.
I'm just gonna say, get a ruler, get, get an objective measurement real quick, get a ruler or something.
Because I'm trying to, like, figure six inches.
Yeah, no, no, I'm not, we're not taking fishing link.
No, no.
It's this big, it's no.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's the size of a dollar bill, it's a six inch. Well, any US currency, because we don't, we don't, we don't adjust for size.
How big is any Bitcoin? Okay.
That inflates too.
But just to clarify, since TJ mentioned it, the, the stuff, the native plantings that we have at Thrive, and what we're talking about with the, you know, the native planting program, that does not apply to, this does not apply.
No.
So we, so we do have a proposed section on exclusions and what that means, and so that will allow some flexibility to our current ordinance in that particular area.
How many, how many calls are you getting on that, on the six inches, or is more of us finding the six inches, or is more of the public?
You know, I think, I think right now, a lot of your like high grass violations might be addressed proactively, and I, and I think because of that, we don't get, we don't tend to get a lot of complaints, but, you know, usually if we are getting that complaint, we're, we're going through that process, right? Because you've got a, you've got a first notice certified, second notice certified, and a lot of times we're having to track down maybe an owner of a property, and so, you know, there's, there's that whole process down the line to, to abatement. So most of the time we get voluntary compliance, and a lot of times it may be, you know, we haven't talked to this person before, and it's just, you know, letting them know kind of what our ordinance is. But, but yeah, there's, there's a process.
It's not the property owner being proactive, it's the city's being proactive, and we're, we're not getting complaints, we're, we're, our code officers are finding it ahead.
So the majority of our, of our cases or our violations noted are, is, is because of proactive code enforcement and neighborhood sweeps.
I think it's probably better, to me, it's probably better at six inches, because it gives you some, it gives you some leeway there. If you do right at 12, well, you know, it can't go higher than 12, you know, it's gotta be, gotta get cut, for six inches, it's.
What's the numbers worth of panic, so just like, it says a thousand a year, 10 a year, how many, how many coders were violated, you had six inches? Plus or minus 20%?
It's.
My house is one a year.
One a year.
Total cases per year, John Keating?
Total cases, including undeveloped lots, about 2,300, but I don't, I don't have them broke down the difference between developed and undeveloped.
I would say there's probably one or higher.
Probably less, yeah, probably less for developed properties than it is undeveloped.
Yeah, undeveloped properties, I'm all for, I'd be a little, frankly, a little more strict, those things can get actualed fast.
Is, is there a perception that changing to a different height would lessen or decrease workload?
That's the, yeah.
You know, I think probably if you went to 12 inches, it might decrease workload. You may, yeah, maybe, but you're still gonna have with the.
Yeah, you, I mean, you get the visual impact, so you gotta balance that, I'm just.
Yeah, most of the things that we're actually having to follow through with, you know, certified letter or some sort of enforcement action.
And this is a turf that we're talking about, we're not talking about all the other, this is turf.
Grass, yeah.
So, yeah, six inches looks good to me.
We're giving elders opportunity to try to correct the situation before it gets too far out of hand anyway, so, I mean.
Yeah, by the time, you know, down the road, if some sort of action's taken, this is, we have to go through the proper notification process for that, so it does take some time if there's no compliance.
Well, I, I think I'm hearing a consensus, coalescing around, leave it, leave it where it is.
There's no efficiency gain, I'll see what.
And so another proposed change is to allow, like, now we're talking about undeveloped property, we're a little bit more flexible than, than most of our cities. If you're looking at undeveloped property greater than an acre, most cities are requiring 100 feet or to 150 feet in on the parcel from, from the property line. Our proposal here is that if you have, you know, an undeveloped agricultural lot over an acre, then basically currently the ordinance says 50 feet, but allowing some flexibility with 30 feet back from basically all improved surfaces, so that's your city streets, sidewalks, and then adjacent property that's, that's actually developed. So if an agricultural property is backing up to, you know, a commercial warehouse or residential property, that they still have to maintain that 30, 30-foot buffer instead of that 50 feet all the way around the parcel right now, according to ordinance. So, you know, we're, we're pretty flexible on undeveloped property, but to offer more flexibility in the case of, in the case of agricultural lots.
How many of those lots do we have, that do we currently have?
There, there actually aren't that many at this point. You know, we have probably maybe a dozen, maybe less than a dozen of, of those lots that fall into that particular category, but, but yeah, there's, there's still some flexibility that I think that we could offer with our, our proposed ordinance that would make it easier on the, on the landowner.
And I do want to clarify one thing, so although I think the pictures that we were, we were looking at might be talking about agricultural uses, maybe some of the, some of the issues we've had come before, the council have been dealing with agricultural uses, this is for all undeveloped land, so not just agricultural uses. So if you're, if you're a larger lot and you're undeveloped, you just have to, basically it's to make sure that you're not having your, your grass growing onto, people can walk in the right of way, they can walk on the sidewalks, and it's not getting close to anything that's 30 feet back from something that someone might be using on a separate lot. But if you have two undeveloped lots together, you can have, basically, as long as your, your right of way is clear by 30 feet, you can allow it to grow in the middle.
The, the majority of our complaints come from, you know, basically, you know, grass growing up on a residential, you know, fence, or, you know, so there has to be, like undeveloped property, there has to be that buffer in there somewhere that, that we're having to maintain, but it doesn't need to be 50.
I need it to be able to see around, because the grass gets too high and I can't see when I'm trying to get, like on 407.
Yeah, so exactly, you know, so you don't have, like, right of way obstruction, but, but yes, so there's some flexibility there, and then also.
So before we move on, just that last round agricultural, you brought us in the same thing, does this impact that gentleman has come to speak a couple of times, at all, positively, negatively?
So he, he has made complaints about the 50 foot, but we've already been giving him some leniency with regard to the 30 foot, so we're actually putting, with regard to how we've handled him, we're actually putting in writing exactly what we've been doing.
So codify is what we're doing.
Codifying what we've been doing.
Yeah, so speaking of that, whatever we, whatever we decide, I don't, no, whatever we say, that's what it's gonna be, yeah.
Because his crop is Johnson grass, and I pay a lot of money to kill that stuff.
Well, I, I'm not getting all that, but.
Thank you.
I think, I think the key is here, same rules for everybody, whatever, 50, we stay with 50 feet, it's gonna be 50 feet, we go to 30 feet, it's gonna be 30 feet. stay with fifty feet, it's gonna be fifty feet. We go to thirty feet, it's gonna be thirty feet. You know, you come and cry out you want, you know, all the so-called letters you have from state reps and state senators. I don't care.
Yes, sir.
Like, let's just set a rule, set a standard.
Yep, agreeing.
Um, so also identifying and expanding, uh, what our definition is of, uh, for our exclusions. So currently we have the first three in our ordinance, but, um, getting some feedback from, from Stacy and also sustainability based on, um, our Roots with Wings Pollinator Program, and also identifying, uh, linear nature parks as defined, as defined by the Parks Master Plan. Um, talking about, uh, out of proof land owned by, um, the city of Louisville for future park expansion. Uh, our water buffer areas, pollinator and wildflower areas as designated by the city. And then also Roots for Wings, which we talked about, uh, already have some signage for that. And then also identifying our, our nature area, uh, Lake Louisville Environmental Learning Area and, uh, any other areas that we've, we've defined.
Can, can you define a water buffer for me?
So, um, looking at what some cities have done with water buffer areas, they may be identifying this as a riparian area, so that basically connected to like a stream or a drainage, uh, bank. Um, or it could be, uh, like City of Denton, I think, uses a hundred year floodplain, uh, as defined by FEMA, so it just depends on how we want to look at that, how we're defining that.
So a lot of these things will, I mean, when we go through the drafting, we're gonna have to come up with the definitions of exactly the right size for us, but, um, really the intent, like, if I'm thinking about Prairie Creek is really, you've seen, uh, some of the park maintenance has allowed the, the stuff along the banks to grow higher because of erosion control issues and things like that. And then really this comes out of, um, the upper, was it called Mending? Oh, I thought Mending was right next to you. The Upper Trinity, uh, Green Belt Plan.
Then Cat and Greenbelt.
Uh, so those are riparian zones.
So like right now, our ordinance just says developed and undeveloped properties, six inches and twelve inches, so, and, and then maintain other buffers. So there's, there's nothing specifically in there about our, our water buffer areas.
Okay.
Um, and then some proposed additional changes, um, looking at some of the city ordinances, there's, there's some, uh, good definitions and information in there about impeding ditches and drains. Um, and then also, um, we've had some, uh, issues with enforcement, but to actually spell out, uh, dying trees, shrubs, uh, those types of things as, you know, unsightly, uh, material. Uh, adding that to some of our definitions that we have will, will help with enforcement. And then also, um, there's, uh, information, uh, located in some city ordinances that talk about, um, you know, properties, um, that are having issues with mosquitoes, standing water, uninhabited private property. So, uh, there's some, there's some pretty good language in there. Um, and also general cleanup of the ordinance, so, um, better organization, uh, adding tables so, you know, you can look at the ordinance and actually figure out without having to read a paragraph, you know, what specifically we're requiring, and then ensure compliance with all the state laws. There's a lot of, uh, other regulations out there such as health and safety code that we wanna take a look at and make sure that our ordinance matches up with, with what we currently have.
I have a question. So going back to the language about not impeding ditches and drains, so if you've got, let's say you have a driveway and you have, we don't have a whole lot of it, but we do have some, you know, behind City Hall, right here on Walters, where we still have, you know, asphalt roads with bar ditches. We have a lot of it in Old Town, actually. So if you have a driveway and you have a culvert, whose responsibility is it to keep that cleaned out? Is it, cause it's in the right of way. Whose responsibility is that?
So I've, I've seen it when it's in, in the right of way that the city is handling it. Um, we've had some issues where maybe unsightly, um, or things that were going on, on the private property were causing the drain to be impeded. Like, maybe there's some things that need to be cleaned up in the property that's causing the issue. So, um, I do this, I, I know that if it is right of way, that the city has handled it in the past.
So is it really just a judgment call based on?
I think it's, probably depends on what, what the situation is on each property. I mean, there's, um, obviously you are responsible for your parkway, so there's questions about that too, but we can, let, let's clarify that, because we haven't had that, we haven't had this restriction in our code, um, but I know we've been dealing with it.
Yeah, I, I, I don't have something in mind that I'm, that's bothering me. I'm just asking because I really don't know, curious.
So you're basically talking about like bar ditches, okay, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, yeah, so anywhere you have a, an asphalt road with a bar ditch, you've got a driveway that comes across it, um, those things silt up over time, so whose responsibility is it?
In my neighborhood.
I, I actually think it's the property owners, but let me get an answer on that for you.
Well, they told me it was the city.
Really?
The property owner told you that?
No, the city.
It was overgrowth that was causing the backup.
Okay, I think it all depends, but let me get, get you an answer and we'll send you guys an email.
Or maybe if, maybe if it just needs to be clarified in.
Who's responsible for it?
Yeah.
We can dig into that a little bit more and get, but, um, you know, as far as, uh, proposed changes and kind of what we had in the presentation, any other, um, feedback from council?
What's our current, uh, let's say, let's say a, uh, person who's got a house and they've got a bunch of dying trees on their property, what, how do we get them to take those, do we have the ability to have, get them to take those dying trees down?
First, first thing that we wanna do is talk to them about our grant program that we have that will assist them with, with that. So there, so there is city funding that, that helps them. Yeah, so we, we try to educate them on what's going on, you know, so it's not just a situation where we're doing a motion notice. Um, but yeah, I mean, it's, it's, it's a process, like if, if, if they're not interested in going down the path of getting a grant and, and we are having to, to seek enforcement on a particular issue, then, um, it, sometimes, you know, uh, it can be a lengthy, uh, process.
We do write tickets on that. It's an unsightly, basically we're, we're considering it unsightly. We just wanna clarify it so that we can just tie it down that this is gonna be an unsightly.
That's why I'm going for it. This will, this will help us with that case, right?
Definitely.
Other feedback, other questions? Patrick?
All right, so quickly go through this. So I know that y'all have been interested in what our, um, approach to, um, administering our mowing contracts is gonna be this year. So just a kind of a reminder of what we went through last year. We had, uh, three mowing contractors, Brightview, Good Earth and Infinity. Brightview had zones one, two, three and six, and that's mainly, uh, parks, medians and facilities west of S, the SRT line. Uh, they had various mow cycles. Some of them were seven days, some of them were fourteen, some were twenty-one or more. They had both mowing, landscaping and bed maintenance, um, in their contract. They did okay at mowing, they did okay at landscape, they just didn't do it well together, uh, throughout, throughout the year. And we had shared inspection responsibilities, which means we didn't have a designated inspector in, on the Louisville side, Louisville proper side for following the contractors around and making sure that they were doing their jobs. Uh, Good Earth had the creek channels in the I thirty-five zone. They did trash remove, removal and brush mowing, so a little rougher cut. Uh, they did eight mo, well, they, they're scheduled for eight mows on the creek. They haven't hit eight mows on the creek for like ten years that they've had the contract, uh, but they are, they are scheduling, those are in them if we need them. And they had four mows along I thirty-five with sixteen trash removals was what their contract was. And then when Infinity came in with Castle Hills, we assumed the contract that the CHMA had with them. They were on a strictly a seven day mow cycle. They did all the mowing and landscaping. And when they, we brought them in, we had a chance to build a team over there in, in Castle Hills, and we had a dedicated park inspector that would follow the, the mow crews around to make sure that they, when they said, we're done with this site, that we put eyes on and said, yes, it's done, it's meets our, you know, is up to our standard, we'll pay you for it. And so that, that, that model has worked really, really well. Seven day motorcycle, they are, they were, um, at an elevated price compared to what our other contractors were, uh, by about three times per acre. Um, three times the amount per acre per year.
Can I talk about that real quick?
Sure.
You brought it up. So this, that was a sore spot for the 1B board for a long time because we had no transparency to that. Basically, the way that worked is that the ward of districts, you know, they have, they all worked under, with the 1A management group. The 1A management group subcontracted that authority out to the, to the HOA, and they went to, took bids. We had no visibility into that. That was a very, that was a sore spot. So I won't, I can concur, it looks great. They do a really good job out there. I don't know if it's three times the money a good job. That was, so I just wanted to put that for consideration.
But did you look at some of our parks, like in Old Town and stuff?
So.
I would rather pay somebody more to get the job done.
Yeah, so I don't know if three X more is the right number or not, but it's, it's.
So they also do some, some irrigation out there. They, they help oversee the irrigation. They're, they're really good. They're responsive. Uh, they, they do pretty much a, a, a quality job everywhere. There are times that our inspector has said, you know what, they haven't done one. A great job, please go back out there and do it. And so having that checks and balances is, is, is pretty important. Um, uh-oh. Uh, so these, these are where the, the zones one, two and three, or you can kinda see there's, uh, parks and medians, uh, throughout town. Uh, some of our challenges, we had, we had some missed mowing cycles, a, a little bit of that was that contract got started late last year. Uh, we had bed maintenance deficiencies throughout town. Uh, weather hit us a, a little bit, a bit, and then we had some excessive trash and debris on our roadways, especially along Business one twenty-one. Um, all three contractors, even Infinity, experienced hiring and retention and, uh, commodity rate increases. They, they all had, had issues there. Um, Infinity fin, did finally get their, their team hired later in the season and was ready, ready to go. So one of the things that we did during the budget process was to say, okay, we know that we need to increase our mowing cycles for the areas west of SRT. We had some staff realignment. We, we took one of our, we had two vacant park maintenance workers that had been vacant for almost a year. We combined those into a park inspector position so that in Louisville, in the original Louisville contracts, we could have some oversight there. And then of course, we're looking at taking some of our larger medians to pollinator, pollinative prairies. So some of the changes that we've made with Brightview, what we've done in their zones is we've pulled landscaping and bed maintenance from each of their zones. Like I said, they were good. They could be good at bed maintenance or they could be good at mowing and we stuck with them on mowing. We kept them, uh, pretty much stasis with what their contract amount was. They did request a CPI increase for their renewal, which we granted for a four percent increase there. With Good Earth and Zone Five, which was along I thirty-five, we increased to five mows and twenty trash removal site visits. And then we created three new zones, seven, eight and nine, that'll be considered tonight. These are gonna be landscaping, bed maintenance around city facilities and high traffic, high visibility areas. Business one twenty-one, Garden Ridge, four oh seven area. Um, and they're gonna be going to a seven day cycle. We've gone through the, the competitive bid pri, um, uh, process and have identified Yellowstone as our contractor that we're recommending, recommending for award. Now, they went through, we, we looked at their qualifications and their plans of attack for how they're gonna address their mow cycles, and they scored the bets. They may not have offered us the lowest price, but when you look at the deficiencies of the other, other contractors, price had a lot to do with it, right? They couldn't afford to keep up with the cycle. I talked about the park inspector position. That person is on board, he's amazing. His name's Samuel, he's doing a good job. And we're increasing no-mow zone area. So, you know, we've got Garden Ridge, we've got places, you know, in Thrive Nature Park at Thrive. Um, I do wanna say is when we started building this plan for what we were gonna do this fiscal year, we were basing it on the Brightview contract because we hadn't yet experienced some of the issues. Um, and we are experiencing the price escalation, um, impact there. We're seeing it not only with our contractors and what they have to pay for fuel and getting their teams on board, but even our teams that we're, we're seeing that pinch point for our mow team. So just know, you know, these, these contracts were, um, one year awards with two year, two, you could, you could up it two times. When we go back out for bid, we're gonna see this kind of increase again.
So does the, the Yellowstone, does that include, uh, Wayne Ferguson?
It, it does not. We take care of, the parks team takes care of Wayne Ferguson, but it's gonna take care of Main Street and Mill Street, all of the, the bed maintenance along here.
Okay.
And City Hall.
That's our team, and we're actually going through a design of that.
And Wayne Freddie Park.
Wayne Freddie Park.
And your, and your water gardens are in that landscaping plan for solutions.
Yeah, the one thing, the one thing, uh, that I really do support, even if it does cost us more, is to make sure we have somebody going out there looking, because I know there was a, a big period last year where grass was like, you know, we talk about code, we're talking about code violations, we were, we were.
We were under code violations.
Uh, plenty of streets, so.
Well, and plenty of that was, we were talking to the contractors, they just didn't have staff to go out and do it. I mean, they really got, they're just like us. We carried seventeen vacancies last fiscal year. We're carrying fifteen now. So we're still, there, that, that's an industry wide thing. Um, them not having a good price point exacerbated their capacity to bring teams on.
So I'm looking at the, at the spreadsheet here of costs, and it's a, it's a widespread, right? Into the five, five most, I guess, it goes from about five fifty all the way up to one point five million.
Mm-hmm.
Love the process here, and I love the fact that I'm picking a low, low cost provider. Uh, I, I think this is, this is a great way to do it. I, I understand what, what happened here. All of these are above the, the, the budgeted amounts, four hundred and fifty thousand. Is that all attributable to cost increases for our, for our vendors?
And that we in, we increased a little bit of the, the number of cycles to meet some of the expectations that were set.
So if you had to ballpark, how much of that was us increasing the, the scope of this contract number that was?
Probably ninety ten.
Ninety, okay, thank you.
So with that, I want, Mayor and Council, I, I did wanna thank Stacy. This has been a really hard year for our parks maintenance crews, and I know y'all have been under a lot of pressure, and we heard you loud and clear. And so Stacy was tasked with come up with a strategy to solve this, and I think she's been very creative. Her team's been very creative, so I wanna thank them.
Charles is right here.
Charles is right there.
Appreciate you guys.
Good job, your work ethic.
I would love to see impacts of expanding, um, pollinator gardens, um, and how that maybe counts as a counterbalance. I know that there's a, a front cost to get those up and, and running, um, but as we continue down this road, I know we, we talked about doing that in stages.
Right.
But I, I'd maybe like to see this in a matrix of some sort that kinda shows where those, those budget points or those pinch points might hit.
Right, so one of the things that we've done with that, with our pollinator thing is we're working with UNT to do some studies that will help us kind of, you know, extrapolate what those tracks will be.
I think that's a, that's an important conversation to have all around this because, you know, that's, that's where we're headed and this is, might have some, if we accelerate it, it might have better budget impacts.
One more quick question, and look at the, at the matrix here. So bonus points for fuel equipment, only one person, one group came in with anything. What is that exactly? What's the bonus point?
So they, we, just, so for our sustainability stuff, if you came in with alternative fuel equipment?
Batteries or some other.
Oh, yeah.
Coats.
Yeah, coats.
Water bubbles.
The, the low, the low cost, um, um, better here at five fifty came, that, he was, that company came in with zero points for equipment. Does that mean they lease all their equipment? What does that mean exactly?
I can't, I don't remember off the top of my head with that.
Yeah, that's kinda weird.
I'll get them, I can look, look what I got.
I was just curious.
I don't.
Yeah, based, based on what came in with their proposal, they didn't provide any information to you.
They just didn't give you information, so.
So they didn't see the zero.
Okay.
They probably do have more, they should have provided.
Exactly.
Sorry?
Customer Kelly, is that all you got?
That's it?
Yeah.
Anybody else?
Thank you.
Thanks, I appreciate the, the.
Good job.
All right, we're gonna move back into item B, discussion of healthy infrastructure plan, and that of course is Ms. Stacy Anaya. Um, Stacy, give you about five minutes to warm up, and then we'll come back to this.
All right, it was, it's not gonna be me. We have our consultants here from Half and from UNT that are gonna carry the ball on this. Actually, UNT's like. All right, so, uh, uh, Mayor, council members, park fans, so we've been working on our healthy infrastructure plan since October of twenty twenty-one. It's been a, a great journey that has included, uh, a, a wide array and a very diverse set of not only our team members with the Parks and Recreation Department, all of the staff members, uh, here in the city of Louisville, key members helping with us, but really our residents. We had a very diverse steering committee that helped us with this. One of the most diverse steering committees I've, I've seen in, in a long time, and I think we've come up with a, with a, an incredible plan that will help make sure that all of our residents have the best chance to live healthy lives, uh, by providing some great, healthy infrastructure throughout the community. That being parks, trails and our urban tree canopy, and how we can make sure those things extend as close to people's front doors as possible. I am going to hand this over to Kendall from Half. She has been leading this and is one of the main authors. I am going to hand this over to Kendall from Half. She has been leading this and is one of the main authors of this. And I'll let her do her magic.
And to just manage time, what we're going to do is we're going to stop here in about four, four and a half minutes. We will kick off our meeting, and then we'll come back into workshop to be respectful for your time so you don't have to wait until we're done with the rest of the meeting. Or can we do that? I thought we did that.
The way it's posted is we have to wait till after reports.
Okay, we're going to need to change the posting so that we can do that again in the future, because I know we've done it historically, where we've been able to come back into the workshop at the beginning. So, okay, then I guess I'm not going to be able to be that respectful of your time. So we'll do what we can.
All right, well, yes, thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers. So. So tonight, we last visited with you back in August, and so since that time, we've finished all the assessments. We've done some more engagement, and we have the draft plan. So we wanted to go over some of the key recommendations with you tonight and also the action plan. So in terms of the project recap, we are at the end of this process. And just as a refresher, this Parks Master Plan is more comprehensive than a traditional Parks Master Plan. So it looks at the more traditional elements like parks, recreation facilities, and trails. We are also encompassing tree canopy. We have some statistics to share with you from that effort, and also looking at this from an overall equity lens to ensure that improvements are, continue to be equitable across the city. We are at the adoption phase of this process, and we're excited to share the progress. So since we last met with you, we did have an information booth, or engagement booth at Western Day. So we've got some great input from residents on some of the direction of our master plan goals. We also had additional steering committee meetings and meetings with the department heads. We had a second public meeting to review the draft recommendations, and just a couple of weeks ago, the Park Board and Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend approval. So in terms of the overall report, it's made up of eight chapters. The real meat of this document are focused on more play, more nature, more connections, and more access. So this is where a lot of the assessments of the existing system and recommendations come into play. So in terms of more play, this looked at various needs assessments, and also looking at recreation aquatic facilities. So some of the key themes that we heard is lots of residents voiced the need for more shade, expanding access via trails, filling in gaps in the system, and also incorporating flexibility in recreational spaces, whether that's indoor court space that can be used for multiple purposes or outdoor fields. More nature, so this is where we looked at the tree canopy as well as the opportunities to expand, extend the green, the green centerpiece. And we also incorporated some sustainability elements as well. And to go to the next slide, I mentioned we had some pretty staggering results of our tree canopy study. So it's estimated about 1.6 million trees in Lewisville today. That accounts for almost 24% of the entire land area. And you can see here, there's just a lot of monetary, but then also air quality and health benefits that the collective tree canopy brings to Lewisville. And then more connections, this is focused on looking at trails. We did a variety of needs assessment to look at potential improvements to the overall trail system. And then more access was focused on putting that equity lens on and looking at ways to improve overall access to parks for all residents. And so some of the key recommendations, this is our overall recommendations map, so I'll try to hit on the key points here. So part of it looks at opportunities for additional parkland. So there are, there is some significant acreage within the city that has already been dedicated for future parkland that just hasn't been developed yet. We also looked at areas to prioritize potential acquisition or partnerships to increase access to parkland. Do you notice these kind of pinkish colors? Those are all the areas that are currently outside of a 10-minute walk to a park. So currently, about 70% of residents live within a 10-minute walk to a park, which we talked a little bit about last time. But obviously, the goal, the overall goal for the future is to increase that to 100%. So part of what this plan is looking at are some of those strategic areas to try to fill in those gaps. This map also represents the proposed trail improvements, additional trail connections, as well as opportunities for filling in key critical gaps in the sidewalk or trail network to improve overall access to parks. You'll notice some of those little kayak icons, those represent opportunity for paddle launches along Lewisville Lake and the Elm Fork, so really diversifying, you know, trail, different trail opportunities within the community. And then this map also recommends certain parks for priority park improvements. These are ones that are going through individual park master plans currently. So overall, some key stats, about 262 acres of proposed parkland, 42 miles of proposed trails, 42 miles of bicycle pedestrian candid corridors. So these are corridors along roadways that could support either a bikeway accommodation or a pedestrian enhancement, but doesn't have the right-of-way available for a full eight-to-10-foot trail, and then four parks for priority improvements. We talked a little bit last time about our equity index. So we looked at various demographic and social variables to develop an overall index to look at potentially vulnerable populations that may not have the same access to resources to improve their health or get to parks. And so the different colors here represent the results of that equity index. So the darker red areas represent more vulnerable populations. And so the areas that are shown in colors here represent the areas that are outside of a 10-minute walk to a park. So the areas that are in the red are underserved in terms of access to parks, and then also have more potentially vulnerable populations. So those are really where we're trying to prioritize access improvements to increase overall access to parks and facilities. And then this is the overall tree canopy map. So all these areas in the light green represent the overall tree canopy coverage within Lewisville. And part of the strategies is looking at areas that the city could undertake partnerships or grant funding opportunities to expand the tree canopy coverage, so looking at some city spaces.
We're going to pause there. Thank you so much. Really appreciate it. Swing back to Sid as we can. All right, we're going to put the workshop on hold and come back to it after council meeting. After report. All right. Good evening. It is 7:00 PM, and I'd like to welcome you to tonight's Lewisville City Council regular session. We do have a quorum, and let's begin. First up, if you would please rise and join me for a moment of respectful contemplation. Amen. Councilmember Green, would you lead us in the pledges?
Please join me for the pledge, the American flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all, and the Texas flag. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
All right, next up, we have the Salvation Army to present the Mayor's Red Kettle Challenge results. Good evening.
Hi, folks. I'm Major Marion Durham, and I'm accompanied tonight by my colleague, David Fiezer, who's the Development Specialist for Collin and Denton Counties for the Salvation Army here in North Texas. So thank you, Mayor Gilmore, and all of you city leaders for really championing and leading the recruitment efforts for the 2022 Lewisville Area Mayor's Red Kettle Challenge. Your leadership did more than just raise money in your area. I don't know if you know this, but your leadership inspired three other mayors from three other communities to join us in the Red Kettle Challenge this year. The Bartonville Mayor, Jaclyn Carrington; Flower Mound Mayor, Derek France; and Highland Village Mayor, Daniel Jaworski. They were all new to the Red Kettle Campaign and joined because of, I think, a little honest competition and maybe a little friendly pressure there. So we've come here tonight to present to you a certificate of appreciation for your team for helping with the challenge to raise much-needed funds for the Salvation Army here in Lewisville. And not just for Christmas, but really helping all of our programs that happen year-round, helping families fight against poverty and instability, homelessness, and addiction. So here's the results. We're happy to report some very successful efforts. Your team ranked second in the number of bell ringers on Saturday, December the 10th, with 12 stellar volunteers, yes. And your team ranked first in dollars raised during in-person bell ringing. Hey, hey! With $1,210.56. And your team ranked first in virtual red kettle donations totaling $1,180.70 with a generosity of 10 donors giving online. Now, all of this combined gave the Lewisville team total dollar raised $2,391.26, which ranked you first above all other mayors who participated in this year's challenge. So give yourself a big hand for a very successful campaign. But most importantly, we thank you with a debt of gratitude because of your efforts in recruiting other mayors. If you add what they raised, that was another 42 volunteers, 23 donors, to raise a total of $6,089.79 in donations. So that is really, really great, and we're so thankful. And we very much appreciate you leading the charge to give hope to people and to help them all of your neighbors in need. So let me give you one quick story to kind of help you understand about what we do at the Salvation Army here in Lewisville. Sam and Donna, their home was in jeopardy because of some health issues, and they were having to make some difficult choices. They're elderly, ages 84 and 83 respectively, and they live on a very modest, fixed income. And Donna's prescriptions had become very costly, and Sam had spent all of their money to make sure that his wife had the medication that she needed, and therefore, they were having trouble paying their rent and their utilities and even buying food. And so they were very worried that their utilities were going to get cut off. So Sam went to the Salvation Army in Lewisville and met with our case management specialist, who realized that this couple could not just only benefit from our helping them with utilities, but also introducing them to the other services that we have, like our food pantry, like our community meal where we serve lunch six days a week, and giving them utility and prescription assistance. And they learned that the Salvation Army was a place that could help them on a regular basis, because you know their fixed income is not going to change. They're not going to be able to increase that. And Sam was very relieved. And they've been able to stay in their home, and they know that they can have the power on, have healthy meals and prescriptions to maintain their health. That's the kind of services that we provide, and that's what you all helped do through the Red Kettle Challenge this year. Now, of course, we anticipate seeing an increase in services, and so we do appreciate that support throughout the year. And even last week, when we were able to provide a warming station during the ice storm at the Salvation Army, and we partnered with Relevant Life Church to continue to maintain our cold weather emergency shelter during the storm, even while our building is being remodeled. So thank you so much for all the hope that you have given our neighbors, and so thank you all for participating in the Mayor's Red Kettle Challenge. Mayor, if you'd like to come down, we want to present you with a certificate and take a photograph, but let's give Mayor and all of the city council a hand for their participation.
Our thanks to the Salvation Army and, of course, Relevant Life Church this past week for the warming station. As I always say, I am merely privileged to steward this role for a small time. And so while I do appreciate the Mayor's challenge, it is the entire team that makes this happen. So thank you for the opportunity to be the steward during this time, but also thank you for making sure that, you know, the communities around us raise the bar. It's pretty exciting. With that, we're going to go ahead and move into the Visitor Citizen Forum. Speakers must address their comments to the mayor rather than to individual council members or staff. Speakers should speak clearly and state their name and address prior to beginning their remarks. Speakers will be allowed five minutes for testimony. Speakers making personal, impertinent, profane, or slanderous remarks may be removed from the meeting. Unauthorized remarks from the audience, stamping of feet, whistles, yells, clapping, and similar demonstrations will not be permitted. In accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, the city council is restricted from discussing or taking action on items not listed on the agenda. Action can only be taken at a future meeting. I do have three requests to appear before the city council, and we'll go ahead and start with Sandy Basil. And Ms. Basil, if you could state your name and address for the record.
My name is Sandy Basil, and I live at 415 South Garden Ridge Boulevard. This is my first time in speaking like this, but I felt it was very important to do this. Three and a half years ago, I moved to Texas from Ohio. I looked for affordable living. It was Evergreen at Lewisville, a 55 and older community. I'll be there four years in June. After my first year, my rent went up $35 a month. The next year, $45. The next year, $60. Then in June, I was told $75 to $90 a month. I'm not sure why the exact amount is not known. I feel there should be a cap put on this amount of rent per month. I worked for 31 years. My retirement income is from SERS in Ohio. It does not increase enough to keep up with these surprise large rent increases. These are not luxury apartments. There are no upgrades. I live within my means. I do not have cable TV, and I do not pay for Wi-Fi. I drive an older car, and my son pays for my phone. There is nothing else for me to do without. So after a few years of enjoying a retirement, I will now have to rejoin the workforce in order to keep a roof over my head and to remain independent. I thank you for your time, and I thank you for listening.
Thank you. Next is Ms. Cindy Staggs.
Greetings all. My name is Cindy Staggs. I too live in the Evergreen community at 415 South Garden Ridge Boulevard. I am but one person representing 15,000 seniors in the area that are now facing a crisis as far as affordable housing is concerned. facing a crisis as far as affordable housing is concerned. My first concern is what is affordable? Some properties have tax breaks. They're subsidized. They are quote-unquote "affordable." On a fixed income, we don't have increases. We're thankful this year for the Social Security increase, but again, it's not enough to compete with inflation, my grocery bills, my medical needs. I also am a full-time caregiver for several seniors. To that end, I implore you to consider the term "affordable," whether it be adjusting the income, the AMI, I believe it's called median income brackets. That is something that needs to be looked at. Another problem is some of us make just a few dollars more than we should after almost fifty years working, that we're just over the edge to qualify for many affordable properties. To this end, I was concerned, what do we do? Today, I'm a member, I am honored to be a member of a Louisville coalition that is beginning to form, you'll hear from our leader in a few moments, of concerned citizens. But I would like you to know that we are just a small group representing many, and there are more to come. I'm not a senior senior. I'm new to the round, but let me tell you, life doesn't prepare you for a lot of decisions that you have to make. Decisions of, do I buy food? Do I get my medicine? How does this work? When my rent increase is three to five hundred dollars a month, what happens? I thank you for your time. I thank you for your ability to recognize that this is urgent. This is urgent, and it's growing, and it is not going to, this problem will not decrease. It will increase as the senior population increases exponentially. We're here to help in whatever that means, whether it means door-to-door flyers, canvassing, whatever, whatever we can do to help. We are not here on a basis of entitlement. We're not entitled. We want a fair shake. I'm not a public speaker. I'm just a person with common sense that says, hi, we're still here. Thank you for your time. Bless you.
Thank you.
Good greetings. My name is Nancy Sansom. I live at four one five South Garden Ridge Boulevard in Louisville. I've been a resident for five years, and I am the coordinator and the spokesperson for the newly formed last year, the Louisville Senior Living Challenges Housing Group. We are, a part of us are here and part of us because of illness couldn't make it tonight. So normally, we have more people here. We, as always, want to thank you for your time to address you with the skyrocketing and unaffordable rent hikes that seniors and others are facing in Louisville. We are here tonight to speak to you about the latest progress we have made in reaching out to our legislators and city officials on the ongoing housing rental crisis here and all over the nation, as you know. Also, we would like to share the stories, and they have already shared with you tonight. At our meeting last Thursday at the Art Guild, State Senator Stan Parker agreed to meet with us and with his staff and also with several of you, Ronnie and Brandon, and the mayor even popped in. And the senator was very impressed with the situation of the crisis, and he expressed his willingness to help with changes to the HUD and the Texas Housing, Department of Housing, federal agency. Their rent format is skewed. It's way off. We do not make ninety-seven thousand four hundred a year. We're lucky if we make twenty thousand, maybe fifteen thousand a year, and that doesn't pay for the rent. We are fortunate that many of the councilmen were also there, so we appreciate that. There's another issue that we'd like to bring up to you that has a tremendous effect on the rate of rental costs charged by property managers here and throughout the nation. As many of you know, Richardson, Texas, has a company called Real Pages Consortium. This corporation's assets is over thirteen billion dollars in property units. Worldwide, the apartments worldwide is twenty-three million units, apartment units in Europe. Many property, the major property owners here in the United States work in conjunction with Real Pages. Real Pages is a consortium and algorithm system where they join in and share information about rents all over the world, all over the United States and the world. And what they're doing now is they're using their influence to raise our rent rates to totally unaffordable and reasonable levels. One of our speakers just spoke to you, and Cindy, and she moved, she and her husband moved from an apartment in Denton where the owners raised the rent six hundred dollars. So they left and moved down to Evergreen. And that's just how ridiculous it gets, you know? It's crazy. So we're concerned. We also have now seven or eight of our own residents are in eviction state. We knew this would happen a year ago. That's why we activated this group. We knew this was going to happen. And so what we're trying to do right now is to help them work with United Way and Salvation Army. Both of those groups have been wonderful, but there's formats that have to be followed. Anyway, we still have eight residents in the pipeline wondering how they're going to meet their rent next month. So as Cindy mentioned, this crisis keeps growing. It just, it doesn't stop. We found out that the Temple, Florida Housing Coalition is currently working with their city council in forming a senior advocacy board, advisory board. They are also looking at Real Pages and its effect on their rents, which are going sky-high with a very high eviction rate. Since seniors, or I should say resident seniors in Louisville will soon be reaching twenty percent of the population, we feel, and we appreciate, that there is a real need for this type of organization in Louisville. We are hoping that consideration may be given to forming a Louisville Senior Advisory Board as we feel the time has come right now, we have crisis right now, to assist in ways to work for senior needs in Louisville. So I thank you very much.
Thank you, Nancy.
And see you next month.
I do want to thank you all for the stories, because I think stories are important. You know, we all look at spreadsheets, but those impact real people's lives, so I appreciate you giving those, and I know that those stories are being archived on our city media, and hopefully you can use those as tools to continue to advocate. All right. Item E. We don't have any other E comments? Okay. Item E, Consent Agenda. All of the following items on the Consent Agenda are considered to be self-explanatory by the council and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests. For a citizen to request removal of an item, a speaker card or E comment must be filled out and submitted to the city secretary. Do we have any E comments or speaker cards? All right. Counsel, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve the Consent Agenda as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. If counsel would please vote? Motion passes six to nothing. Item F, Regular Hearing. Consideration of Acceptance of the Resignation of Britten Chapman from Place Number Three on the Animal Services Advisory Committee. Declare a Vacancy exists on the Animal Services Advisory Committee and Consideration of an Appointment to Place Number Three on the Animal Services Advisory Committee. Britten Chapman, Place Number Three, had notified staff of his resignation from the Animal Services Advisory Committee. The City Council will need to declare a vacancy and consider a new appointment to fill the vacancy. Data sheets of applicants interested in serving on this committee have been included for City Council review, and it is recommended that the City Council accept the resignation, declare a vacancy, and consider an appointment as set forth in the caption. Counsel, I will entertain that.
I move that we accept a resignation and appoint James Cooney to this position.
Are you going to declare a vacancy as well?
I said, yeah, declare vacancy, accept a vacancy.
Okay. We got all that?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Counsel, if you'd please vote? That'd be six to nothing. Motion passes. Thank you, counsel. Item six, Tabled Item. Consideration of an Ordinance Amending the City Code, Chapter Fifteen, Article Two, Section Fifteen through Thirty-five, Maximum Speed Limits on Specific Streets, Establishing a Speed Limit of Fifty Miles Per Hour on State Highway One Twenty-One Business from the Sam Raiborne Tollway to three seventy feet south of Valley Ridge Boulevard, Providing for Repeal or Severability, Penalty, and Effective Date, and Declaring an Emergency. There was conversation in the workshop, if you didn't catch that, we have done a different survey and found that there is a difference, a significant difference, and so it's recommended that the City Council take no action on this item. Item G, Reports. Reports about items of community interest regarding which no action will be taken. Councilmember Kelly, mind if we start with you tonight?
Nothing to report, Mayor.
Thanks, sir.
We can start here.
Councilmember Green?
I actually had something really quick that I wanted to, it's actually a repeat of what Councilmember Jones reported last month. And it's because I see a lot of folks going on social media and talking about either code violations or something their apartment's doing or not doing, or complaints that they have. So the important thing is when the trash isn't getting picked up, or somebody's grass isn't getting mowed, or somebody's watering when they're not supposed to be watering, don't expect the city to just have the eyes to see it. Report it, and we have mechanisms that you can do that through. We do have an app called R. Louisville, Texas. It's super easy to download, create a quick account, and you can even report anonymously if you don't want your neighbor to know that you're the one who reported them. You can report anonymously, and if you don't have the app or don't feel comfortable with using apps, you can also go on the city's webpage and access it from there as well. It's really user-friendly. I'm not a technological person, but this is really super easy to use. So if you know about it, great, use it. And if you use it already, tell a friend, tell five friends. Thank you.
Feel like we had a Vidal Sassoon commercial there for just a moment. Councilmember Jones?
You're aging yourself there, Mayor.
Right?
Just a quick note, volunteers are needed for the St. Patty's, Texas style. The event will be March eighteenth from noon to seven PM at Wayne Ferguson Plaza. You should have gotten that information on e Horizon, or you can go to the City of Louisville website, and you can sign up to volunteer at timecounts.org. So come out and volunteer and help the city out. That's all I got.
Councilmember?
Yes, Mayor, I've got some library activities for the week. Every Monday, February sixth through April tenth, ten AM to three PM by appointment only at the Crawford Meeting Room, AARP and the Louisville Public Library are partying together again to offer free income tax assistance on your two thousand twenty-two basic tax return. Tax aid is open to anyone, priority may be given to those fifty and over. Call or visit the library to make an appointment. Volunteer Income Tax Assistance Vita for Adults every Thursday, January twenty-sixth through April thirteenth, five to seven thirty PM. Assistance provided on a first-come, first-served basis at the computer lab. Valentine Factory for Families with Children of All Ages, Tuesday, February seventh, five to six PM. No registration required at the Bennett Program Room. Snail Mail Write-In for Adults, Wednesday, February eighth, six to seven thirty PM. No registration required at the Crawford Meeting Room. And Valentine Anti-Valentine Party for Teens Age Thirteen to Eighteen, Thursday, February ninth, six thirty to seven thirty. No registration required at the Bennett Program Room. That's all I have.
Councilmember Troyer?
Yes, Mayor. I have a number of things for the Louisville Grand Theater. First of all, performances coming up. Rhapsody in Blue, presented by the Louisville Lake Symphony, will be on this coming Friday evening, the tenth. We have two Texas tunes concerts in the next two weeks. First of all, Jackie Vincent will be performing on February eleventh, and both of these, by the way, are presented by the City of Louisville. And then Alejandro Esquivado will be in concert on February seventeenth. This was one that was rescheduled, was originally scheduled for January twenty-first, but will now be February seventeenth. And then, as always, we have the Acoustic Jam every Friday night, presented by the Visual Art League of Louisville, in one of the rooms in the Grand Theater. And I just want to give a shout-out to the amazing singer-songwriters we have in Louisville, in the Louisville area, who performed this past Friday night. They have, we have a quarterly, quarterly singer-songwriters challenge, and this past Friday night, twenty-one, I think twenty-one songwriters presented a song that they wrote during the past fourteen and a half years, at some point during the past fourteen and a half years since this challenge has been going on quarterly. We have some amazing talent in the area. So if you haven't been to the jam, I would encourage you to come out on a Friday night, and especially when the next challenge shows up, come and see what we have in the area for, there was some amazing music presented Friday night. And then there are activities, there is some art talk, Nature's Vibrations by David Blow, presented by the Visual Art League of Louisville on February fourteenth. Sounds like that may be Valentine-related, but anyway. And then exhibitions going on right now, Living the Dream, It Takes a Team. This is an art and photography exhibition put on by the Committee to Commemorate MLK Day. This goes on from January twenty-first through February twenty-second. And I'll tell you, if you haven't been there, you need to go see it, because they're, just like we have some amazing musical talent in the area, we have some really amazing artistic students who did some really incredible work, and all kinds of media for this exhibition. And then finally, the Louisville Achievement Fair, presented by the City of Louisville, will be going on February eleventh through the eighteenth. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Attorney, City Secretary?
Yes, sir.
Officer, thank you for being here.
Nothing, Mayor.
No, part Mayor.
All right. Nothing? Nothing? And now we're right back to my lake level.
Lake level report. We're currently at five hundred and twenty point four-four feet in elevation, and that's about ninety-two point seven feet in, I'm sorry, ninety-two point seven percent full.
All right. Thank you, sir.
No report, Mayor.
All right. City Manager?
Just wanted to thank the team for their response during the recent winter storm event, and our emergency manager showed out very well. He's brand-new, so very thorough, slept in his office, and very, very pleased with that. And then Mark was my handler, so I appreciate Chief McNeil, too.
No, it was a great performance by the city staff. I'm glad we didn't have any major events to worry about, but I feel like if we did, it would have been handled, so I appreciate you all. Do want to point out a couple of small things. First of all, I'm very excited about this year's Black Helmet Ball. Always interesting to see what the statistics are of what we achieved over this past year, so looking forward to that celebration with the Fire family this weekend. Of course, the Achievement Fair that we're discussing will be there, so if you get a chance to come by, that's, those are all middle and high school students that are really celebrating achievements by people of color. And so gonna be a lot of, a lot of really great and informative stuff that will be over there, so if you get a chance, swing by. I did want to take a moment and have two, two small things. One is our state representative, Karina Temish, is having, hosting a
Khranda Temish, is having, hosting a legislative update as well as local update, so there'll be myself, the mayor of Carrollton, county commissioner, Kevin Falconer, he's our newest commissioner, I should know that by now, and of course Representative Khranda Temish will be all over at the Queen Margaret Event Center over in Castle Hills. You can probably find out more information by checking on Representative Khranda Temish's Facebook page, or you can ping TJ and I'll figure it out for you. And I wanted to thank North Point Men's Breakfast. I've been asked to go speak with that group on Saturday morning, and I always appreciate when our organizations, whether they're churches, HOAs, not-for-profits, corporations, reach out to our city council, not just me, not the mayor, but our city council, our city staff, and ask for input, and ask for ways to communicate, and just to find out more about the city. So if you've got a group or an organization, every one of us up here is probably pretty good at providing some sort of entertainment for at least 20 minutes, but it's a great way to get to know your city and be able to find opportunities to give back. So thank you for that, North Point Men's. With that, we're going to go ahead and return to workshop, and we're going to hold this meeting open as we do still have closed session after that. I'm just saying that to make people try to eat them.
I need to make them have easier to eat.
All right. I think we're ready to move into the action plan. Thanks for your patience.
Thank you. So the overall action plan is driven by six overall plan goals. So the goals are connect the community, raise awareness, and ignite learning. Ensure system is the standard for the region, reinforce community building, utilize nature as a centerpiece, and embrace and support diverse experiences. So we developed these goals based on all of the community input that was received throughout the process, and also routed them through steering community and other stakeholder groups. And so underneath each of these six goals are a series of objectives, which are more specific desired outcomes that relate to the goals. And then the bulk of the action plan is made up of strategies, which are specific implementation actions. And there's over 100 strategies that make up the overall action plan. Obviously, those aren't intended to be implemented all at once. We do have short, medium, and long-term timeframes for all the strategies, but as part of this effort, we did identify some draft high-priority strategies. And part of this is to be prepared for funding opportunities, like through the Texas Parks and Wildlife Department, they annually give grant funding out for park improvements, and it's helpful to have the master plan and also high-priority strategies identified. And so these next couple of slides just go through those draft high-priority strategies. So under goal one, we have implement trail and sidewalk improvements to improve overall connectivity to parks, develop and activate currently undeveloped parklands, and then implement improvements to those individual park master plans, Vista Ridge, Thillway, Thrive Nature Park, and Lake Park. Under goal two, we have install wayfinding signs throughout the community, and then identify preferred sites, design and seek funding for a nature center near Leela. Goal three, implement improvements to the 10 audit parks assessed in this master plan. So we did take a deeper dive look at 10 parks throughout the system that are representative of different categories of parks, and have a series of recommendations for those sites. Another high-priority strategy is to acquire property for more multi-use sports fields. Goal four, work with surrounding communities to identify paddling trail launch sites, create options for recreation-based sports programming in addition to sports leagues, and then encourage the development of Friends of the Park groups for help with fundraising efforts. Goal five, create a data set that prioritizes suitable planting spaces, and then establish an urban forestry unit with the Parks and Recreation Department. And then finally, goal six, incorporate parks and open spaces as older multifamily and commercial development starts to redevelop, and prioritize recreation programs that were identified as needed through this process, such as adult fitness and wellness, outdoor concerts, and senior programs. So of the over 100 strategies, those are the ones that we've identified as being kind of the top priority to really focus on implementation at the outset of after-plan adoption. And then next steps, we're just looking at coming back to the council in a couple weeks for public hearing and consideration for approval. And then once the plan is adopted, we will work with staff to submit the master plan to Texas Parks and Wildlife Department so they have it on file, and so the city can get bonus points when they do apply for grants in the future through TPWD. And that's all I have, so I'll be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
I have a quick question. So going back to tree canopy as an example, how hard is that to measure every six months, every year, to make sure we stay on track, make sure we don't lose tree canopy to the development, things like that? So what's the process for measuring that sort of measure?
Yeah, so the process that we went through was a combination of using GI, geographic information system and LiDAR information combined with physically going out and sampling tree plots. So it was quite a bit of effort to do the physical in-person plots. So I would imagine maybe every, I don't know, couple of years or so, an effort could be made to go out and do those samplings. But a lot of what you can, the changes you could see with high-resolution aerial imagery as well, so we use some combination of that to see how the canopy growth changes.
So it sounds like we would have to split up separate project every time we wanted to go and do another measurement like this. Is that accurate?
No, I think what we would do is probably work with Chris's team to figure out how we could do some sort of measurement of it. A lot would depend on what structure it would look like for the forestry units.
I think part of the key to that is having a robust Arbor Day-type program, or some of those other programs where people can easily add the proper types of trees to their landscaping, because I think, to Patrick's point, development's going to take trees down. I mean, we live in Texas, so the property owner's rights are pretty high. I know we've done what we can, but we will lose additional tree canopy, so how do we replace that? How do we counterbalance that, I think, is an important conversation. I know we do some programming in that area. I know we have a lot of our master naturalists really pushing that, so that might be an interesting angle to discuss in years out from this. How do we get more tree canopy? How do we actively pursue it?
Well, I guess I had a question about the tree canopy. I assume there's some metric that we're looking for a certain number of trees per acre or whatever that we're looking at. Would that be accurate?
Well, from, communities vary so much in terms of the developed versus undeveloped area, and also just the natural ecological areas. So, you know, the portions of North Texas that are in the cross-timbers ecoregion will just naturally have more tree coverage, where the prairie areas won't have as much tree coverage. So there's really not a metric per se of, like, per trees per capita, and there aren't that many communities in DFW that have done a similar tree canopy assessment. So it's hard to make those comparisons, because you're not really comparing apples to apples.
But I would assume, though, that the purpose of doing the, kind of, the, there's obviously environmental reasons, but I'd also think that it would have something to do with, you know, combating heat island effect.
Of course.
You know, creating a more pleasant environment for people to get out and walk and bike and enjoy nature. I was just, I was thinking, my first thought would be if we, looking at the city as a whole, I almost feel like we would need to look at the city as a whole minus Leela, and have Leela kind of separate, because it feels like Leela would really skew.
The neighbors.
Yeah.
And in the report, we do look at that comparison of breakdown by land use, and Leela is its own category, so we can look at what percentage of the tree canopy for the city with and without Leela. And to your point, or to your point about the effects of urban heat islands, so Dr. Fisher and her team at UNT did do some ambient temperature readings and air quality readings within six neighborhood focus areas. Did you want to talk a little bit about?
Sure, yeah. Hi, sorry. My name is Lauren Fisher. At UNT, we've been working with the team for a year to do some ecological monitoring around heat and air pollution. And so we can model sort of that, and how trees and the built environment and different factors and sort of the human development process lead to, we can project out sort of what does the heat island effect look like, and what could some mitigation techniques possibly be for that. So our report is included as an appendix to the Healthy Infrastructure Plan. We talked a little bit about our methodology there. All of our monitoring for air quality and heat is ongoing, so that does not stop with this. So the city will have access to that data. It's open source and publicly available to be able to monitor those going forward as well.
Well, I'll just say, I really appreciate that this, the tree piece is in this plan, even though I know it's really not kind of standard practice. I know, me personally, at Western Days last year in the middle of the day, I was hanging out under the trees, because it was not bearable when you were just out in the full sun. And so I think that's an important piece of not only getting people to partake in our parks and trails, you know, for recreation, but also, you know, for, I always like to talk about the mobility aspect as well, and, you know, if we're going to have, if we're going to be able to support multiple modes of transportation, you know, pedestrian, biking as a form of transportation, not just recreation, we need to make it as comfortable as possible to do so. So I think that's, I really, really appreciate that you had this in here. And just really quickly, y'all, so I wanted to say, I absolutely love how you had the categories of all the stuff that said, more connections, more access, more nature, more play. Bob, can, do you remember when we were in the 2025 Blue Ribbon? Our motto was, "We want more." And so I love that y'all, y'all kind of, it was a play on words for me, and I looked at that and I was like, oh man, that could be right back to the 2025 Blue Ribbon Committee.
Not to beat the canopy question to death here, but I do want to try, I think. So I saw the number, 23.28%, you can't, I don't know if that's good, if that's bad. I thought I just heard you saying that's just a number, you can't really compare it to anybody else around. Can we understand that number? If it's uncomparable, it's uncomparable in most instances.
Well, so think of it in terms of time within Louisville. So in the report, it looks at some areas, how the canopy has changed from 2010 to 2020. So looking at areas where the tree canopy has grown, where maybe there were some newer trees planted, and now it's providing much more substantial canopy coverage, but then also areas where there has been some clearing for development. So part of the model that we use helps to look at different snapshots of time. Stacy, I don't know if you want to add anything, but how it is kind of hard to compare to other communities?
Yeah, just because of the topography and our ecosystem here is even just different, more different, it's different than what's in Flower Mountain or what's in Carrollton, so it's tough. So it's easier for us to look and say, what has the change been, and project? And then if you look back at the map that we provided. So this talks about where we have opportunities to preserve what is, and you talked about vacant property that might be developed. So you see these areas are highlighted. These are areas that we might consider, hey, is there a good stand out there that we go and we land bank, or if someone is coming and looking to clear that and develop, what tools have y'all put in place for us to encourage protecting the canopy that exists there, and then monitoring what that looks like over time?
My takeaway is, is there's no, there's too much canopy, oh my goodness, there's just too much of it.
No, never.
There's never too much canopy. You're right, but to your point, is if we remove Leela, we would look like we were in significant deficit. And so protecting that green space and not just saying, oh, it's good, it's good there, and walking away from it, it's not. We do need to protect it and make sure that it remains of the big, you know, clean walk.
Thank you.
Other comments? Stacy, I'd be curious in this data, if we couldn't pull out where we have opportunities to add more canopy along our trails and our alternative modality transportation pieces. I would think if the city is looking to invest in this kind of additional landscape or additional canopy, that that would be a high-dollar return on that investment. And I think we got the data set to look for it. I'm hearing kind of a, okay, we got data, what do we do with it, is what I'm hearing. So that's kind of what I'm, I'm interested in hearing, you know, what the experts have to say about, okay, we've got a data set, what can we activate on? Or is this just something, maybe to Patrick's point, hey, 10 years, we do another one of these, and we've, you know, we watched the curve bend, great. We knew we was going to do this 10 years ago, does this help us any?
Right, so to me, I think looking at this is, I think they're absolutely correct, and there's not a set goal, right? So like, when you have a ten-minute walk to a park, we can set, like, what our goal is to be 100%. So you're not comparing, I mean, you're comparing cities that are completely different. But what it does give us is a data set on the front end so that we can compare in the future, right?
Sure.
And so what Stacy's saying is by working with our IT department, now we can't do the samples every year, that's very labor-intensive, but you could work with our, I mean, I know IT had done a, where is IT?
Remote, remote offices.
But prior to this process, they had done kind of a LiDAR analysis that kind of was a rough version of this, so that we can kind of true this up. And I also think it's important that we can set goals. I mean, when we have, we have tree mitigation dollars, we put money aside, and we also have Keep Louisville Beautiful, that has tree planting money as well, and it's prioritizing where those plantings are. Look at this, is these are being, where we want to focus on planting, but also, I think you're right, more bang for your buck. So if we're looking at, you know, alternative modalities, walking, biking, then those are key areas. We need to be consistent about planting our trees in, so.
I just, I liked the conversation around, what can we do with the data? So I'm looking forward to that, that conversation continuing. And it allows us to kind of set the standard for the rest of the region, which is one of the focal points of this. So if there are no other questions, counsel, I'd encourage you to look at the six items, the outcomes, maybe look at those 111 items, give some feedback between now and the next meeting, so that we can make sure that this is hitting on all cylinders for everybody. This is a really important document. It's a really critical baseline for a huge chunk of our city resources, and a huge chunk of our 2025 plan, 2035 plan. So let's make sure that everybody's put good eyes on it.
When we're looking at adding tree canopy to the trails and stuff like that, are you incorporating the lighting that's going to need to be installed in, on that? Because we can't just put a bunch of trees and no lights.
When we go into individual plans, yes, we start, we start looking at that. We're, unfortunately, when you start designing those, one of the things, first things gets cut is lighting, so we're trying to figure out how do we?
You're talking about modality, though. You're talking about different kinds.
You're going to want the safety factor in there, and?
You're absolutely right.
So you'll see in some of the Blue Ribbon projects that David Solomon's put forward is that they have.
Hey, Ronnie? Showing you how you do it.
You'll see that some of, but you thought you were in Congress. Several of the projects that he's putting forward is our complete street projects, so you're looking at the lighting, you're looking at the better sidewalks and things like that. Some of these projects don't have PCI.
PCI?
Data that's showing that these are crumbling streets. These are, you know, to make sure that we are getting better connections and creating a human environment for walking.
Mayor, you will get a copy of the draft in your agenda packet for February 20th, but on our, at playlewisville.com.
but on our, at playlewisville.com on our Healthy Infrastructure page, the draft is there now for review, and we're taking comment. If you want to get a head start, it's like, I know you made a comment at the last Boards and Commissions party, that Stacy put the 200-page document out there, you didn't have time to read it. So we put a 400-page. Why not double it? You overachiever.
I was, I was trying to get to that point without getting to that point.
Just walking by with a brownie.
That's what I do.
But it's, it's on there for y'all to get a head start on reading it. It will be included in your package.
Yeah, it speaks to how important, I think, this is.
Is it on audio?
Yeah, just have her read it to you.
Could you just put it on audio, Horus?
Ronnie, Ronnie, I'll come by. I'll come by.
Okay, thank you. Break that law with you, too.
Yeah, we'll do, we'll do. Anything else? All right, so we have to go back out there, so that we can call ourselves into closed session in here. So let's go ahead and do that dance. All right, we are done with workshops. So in accordance with Texas Government Code Subchapter D, Section 1, 551.072, Real Estate Property Acquisition, and Section 551.087, Economic Development, Deliberation Regarding Economic Development Negotiations, we are going to move into closed session. My mics are on. Hello, hello. As there is no other action to be taken, this meeting of the Louisville City Council is hereby adjourned, and that is at 8:15 PM.